Okay, thank you. If what? Well, he told me that they were going to be here after.
I know that to be back.
Yeah, that's.
It works. It works.
It works.
Yeah.
He's been the scene.
All right, anybody do a welfare check for Brad?
I was gonna say.
Oh, my gosh.
It might be true.
I know. I know, that's a good point.
Oh, I think he had to pick up his sister from the hospital.
Oh.
Call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Teresa.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Balk.
Here.
Item three is the consent agenda. Item three A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of February 21, 2022. Item B licenses, renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and outdoor service for Spencer Golf and Country Club, subject to final approval by the Iowa ABD. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending February 28, 2022. Item D is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2022 Fairview Tennis Court Replacement Project, letting date of April 8, 2022, hearing and award date April 18, 2022. Item E is a motion to set the hearing date for March 21, 2022, 6:30 PM for CDBG application for 2023 Eastside Reconstruction and Sewer Separation Project. Item F is a motion to approve Northwest Landscaping, Inc. as subcontractor for 2022 Drainage District Number 47 Outlet Project. Item G is a motion to approve Beck Excavating, Inc. and Service Signing L.C. as subcontractors for 2022 HMA Overlay Project. Item H is a motion to approve amendment to contract number 14 TC 016 with Iowa Economic Development Authority to revise job obligations date. Item I is a motion to approve purchase of 10 rear load containers with lids for Solid Waste Division from Klute Truck and Refuse Equipment, Lincoln, Nebraska, for $17,024. This is a CIP item. And that is it for the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Okay, consent agenda carries. Item four, public hearing on proposed City of Spencer maximum property tax levy for fiscal year July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2022.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three should be. Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Well, just, we need to declare it open. I declare the public hearing now open. Do we have any written comments against?
We have none, Mayor.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item 4A1 is a resolution approving the maximum property tax dollars for budget year July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023.
I'll make it now.
Okay, motion made by Ron.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion?
Do we want Dan or Brian to go through and explain that this is a maximum amount? And which one ever wants to speak forward?
Think that's a good idea. And they can flip a coin or?
Looks like Brian's got his mic on.
Okay.
So, yeah, this requirement is, and we're in our third year of doing this, the state changes. What we're required to do is publish a hearing and notice of saying what our maximum property tax dollars is for certain levies, so it does not include the entire tax levy, nor does it include the entire, all, the final tax rate. It's just a component of that, of which is what is displayed. And if you look at the notice, you're going to see three columns. Column one was what was levied or collected in the current fiscal year. Column two, which is where typically the confusion lies, is that if we were going to ask for the same exact dollars, to the penny, for those same levies for next year, what would that be? What would the levy be if that was the case, based on basically new growth or, you know, changes in valuation that is subject to taxation? And so with us seeing growth in there, obviously, that's going to drive that levy down if we were asking for the same dollar amount. And then the third one, third column, when you look at the hearing notice, is what the dollar amount we're requesting for fiscal year '23, and then that percent change is what's between column B, which is what theoretically would have been had we not asked for any dollars new versus what they're asking. And in this case, I think it's a little over eight or 8.8% difference. Although, as we discussed during budget, the changeover, what it is currently, the levy rate in the end is only about a 4% change. This is, yeah.
And you will have a lot more to talk about that at the second meeting in March with regard to the levy.
So this is step one of the budget adoption process. We have to go through this, then. Then you'll see later on in new business, we'll set the budget for the actual, or the hearing for the actual budget, at which we'll detail a little bit more of the impacts and what is contained in that in about a 10-minute presentation.
Well, I was going to say, we'll all look forward to the latest Brian Weave slideshow. It'll be entertaining.
Hard to wait.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
After all the work he does, he does on that, you want to pick on it?
Oh, just a little, just a little. Okay, all right. Seeing no other discussion, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item five under old business. Item A is an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 1, Section 1 of the Spencer City Code concerning the definition of transient merchants and adopting a new Chapter 8 Title III of the Spencer City Code regulating mobile food or beverage vendors. And this is the final filing. Motion made by Tom.
I'll second it.
Second by Ron. Any discussion?
Guess I'd just like to thank Alex for all the work that he put in it. And, you know, it has been a process, but I believe by talking to the vendors and stuff, I believe the cities came up with the best option and kept everybody informed. So, you know, that's what I like about the city and this situation, that we kept everybody informed and everybody had their say-so. And I think everybody, what I've heard, haven't had a lot of, anybody complaining. They've been happy that they had their input, so.
And I'd add to that, thanks to the vendors that participated in the meetings to help get this to satisfactory ordinance.
Okay, anybody else? And I would just, excuse me, reiterate what Ron and Tom just said, that Alec did a tremendous amount of work on this. A lot of input was received. It was not a fast process. It was a slow process. But sometimes that's how these kinds of things go. And the food truck operators that I talked with over the past several weeks were very appreciative of the fact that they were allowed input and the fact that their input actually resulted in some changes to the ordinance, so. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Motion carries. Item six, new business. A is a motion setting a public hearing for Spencer, for the City of Spencer budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 for March 21, 2022 at 6:30 PM.
Still moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item B is a motion to set public hearing for Spencer, for the City of Spencer capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2023 for March, is this, to 2027?
Yes.
For March 21, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Motion made by Tracy. Second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Item C is a motion for acceptance of Eckhart Land First Edition Sewer Extension from developer and make it part of the public sanitary sewer system. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item D is a motion to approve and authorize reimbursement of $11,768.07 to Mike Eckhart for a City of Spencer share of 2021 Eckhart Land First Edition Sewer Extension.
Still moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Okay. Any discussion? What's that? Any discussion? Any discussion?
I'll wake him up.
Okay. Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item E is a resolution proposing the establishment of the City of Spencer 25th Avenue Southwest Sanitary Sewer District and the adoption of connection fees, setting a public hearing for April 4, 2022, and directing the publication of notice.
I'll make a motion on that, Mayor. Is that 25th Avenue? Is that 25th Avenue or 25th Street?
Street? Should be 25th Street. You're right. Thank you.
I was like.
We'll make that correction. Okay. We still need a second.
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you, Lauren. Second by Lauren. Any discussion?
Tough crowd over there.
Seeing none, please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Okay. Item seven, Department head reports. Planning Department, Alec.
Good evening, everyone. Planning Department has been busy working on ordinance that you folks have passed tonight. We have been working with HPC on the grant work that was presented for the second floor accessibility project. That stuff was, the grant contract was signed and sent in today. Saw that. So we've got that RFP drafted and the solicitor list drafted and sent to the state. So we'll get that going hopefully the end of March here. I'll get that RFP before the HPC at their meeting here and hopefully, like I said, get it out to contractors, keep that grant moving. Doing work on city future planning, working with some businesses based on potential expansion within the city. P&amp;Z we've got this week. We're looking at conversations that refer to housing and CBD residential statuses and text amendments there. With the warm weather coming up, we're working on warm weather planning. Words. We're looking at different operations that we, you know, switch over to, such as hopefully soon, green grass and everything that comes with it. Other than that, busy as usual.
Any questions for Alec? Thank you.
Thank you.
Library, Sarah Beth.
Good evening, everyone. The library has a couple more grants coming in. We will be receiving money from the Clay County Community Foundation. We don't know how much yet until the ceremony next Monday, but that is to beef up our Spanish collection as well as our books for small businesses that we hope to complement the chamber in the Iowa Lake Small Business Development Center. The other grant we have received was the American Rescue Plan Humanities Grant for Libraries, which is an initiative of the American Library Association, made possible with funding from the National Endowment for Humanities through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. We were one of 200 libraries nationwide that were awarded $10,000 through this grant. And this is what we're going to use to hire Chad Elliott to create a large mural for our magazine reading section and have a reception where he does a concert and tells us about his creative processes for writing and music and art and everything he does. So that'll be a fun one. The whatever phase we were on with the HVAC project is almost wrapped up and ready for the next one. We had another cryo and blaine technician out last week checking that hot water cutoff. And he left saying he needed to get apart and he hoped to be back the next day, but that was Thursday, so we'll see when we see him again. We have, we've almost filled all our positions. Did you hear back? Haven't heard back. Well, we, so we. Yes, we have an offer out for the part-time clerk, which is open because we promoted Robin Johnson to the teen services librarian. And she started that just a week ago. Otherwise, we are planning for National Library Week, which is next month in April. We're going to do an escape room for all ages. It should be fun. And just gearing up for summer reading program, so.
Any questions for Sarah Beth? Thank you much. Fire, Chief John.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. This month, your fire department answered over 60 calls with a breakdown that includes under fire. We had some odor calls. We had a couple of motor vehicle accidents as well as fluid cleanup. Did a couple of lift assists. And we did have a couple of gas leaks, which brings to mind, if we're out there in the audience, please, don't hesitate to throw a new battery in your CO detector. Let's, if you haven't done a spring cleaning in your basement, this would be a great time to do it, especially around your furnaces, your dryer. Clean that lint out. It'll make a big difference for all of us. We also did have a tree dump fire that was significant working with the street department as well as fire departments from Fostoria. We went ahead and controlled it and together with the synergy of both departments, we all put it out. EMS runs include flus, unresponsiveness, shortness of breath, stomach pains, fall victims, heart issues, overdoses and diabetics, fall victims. If you're, if you have a neighbor and you know they're a little bit elderly, why not stop by and say hi, maybe move that extension cord out of the way, maybe make a clear walking path for them. We're Spencer. We're all family. We should treat each other accordingly. Shortness of breath, we still have some COVID issues out there, so please be careful and remember that. Our ambulance, 104, we went ahead and we had, again, a couple of fall victims, difficulty breathing, seizures, and a couple of bleeding victims as well. Training this month included hazardous material refresher following NFPA's 472 guidelines. Each member received a four-hour hazardous material refresher. Also this month, the department, all department members went through a physical with Med Compass that includes both inspirometry as well as heart workup as well as a couple of, you know, a few other things that are definitely making a difference for not only the membership, but also the body, which is great. EMT school has, they're finishing up. We have three students that will be graduating post-March the 19th, so we look forward to that. Special duties also include coming to goal-setting for the city as well as having an operational budget review, which was definitely a good night as well. And that's what's been going on with your fire department at this time.
Any questions?
Sounds good. Thanks a lot for letting us serve.
Police, Chief Warburton.
Good evening. The police department responded to 706 calls for service the month of February, and we performed 68 arrests. February 9th, members of the Clay County Sheriff's Office, Spencer Fire and PD, we had an initial meeting to discuss active shooter scenarios. The upcoming, it's expected that the departments are going to come together and have an upcoming training day or scenario day at the high school during the summertime. A meeting was held with Century Link to discuss Viper upgrade to the Communication Center, 911 Center. This was a fairly informal meeting with a more specific meeting to follow here as far as quote for the system. I attended the leadership forum at Spencer's High School. This gave a chance to students to ask questions regarding leadership qualities of city leadership. The 911 Board met to approve its annual budget as well as discuss console upgrades within the Communication Center. And lastly, the Communication Center is still looking for a dispatcher, so this is a position from midnight to 8:00 AM Friday through Tuesday. Have any questions?
Any questions? Thanks, Chief. Public Works, Mark.
Good evening, everybody. In the Solid Waste Division, we received the new solid waste residential automated, or automated packer truck. You may have seen it at Family Fest. We made the decision to keep it off the route for a week because they're only new once, and a new garbage truck is much, much more enjoyable than a used garbage truck to have inside the building, so. That was nice to see that. It's decalled well, thanks to SNS, so it looks good. Street Division, in addition to the normal snow and ice removal, we had some fairly significant repairs at the central garage. We had to replace a bunch of trench drain, had to cut a hole in the floor and install clean-out, do some aggressive cleaning on some cast iron plumbing under the slab. So we were pouring concrete last month, just happened to be indoors is all. Painted barricades repaired and various repairs on equipment for the upcoming construction season. The weather allowed us, with the warm weather, to do some additional sewer cleaning and work. We had one section of street that had significant root penetrations. Were able to find those with the camera and cut those out. Also trying to assemble the cleaning quadrant or cleaning area for the sewer project or program this season, so every year we pick a section of town, make an attempt to clean every line in that section. It's usually into fifths, pretty close is how it, is how it lines up. You might have seen some heavy equipment south of the Southern Point apartment houses. That's a city-owned drainage facility in there with that open ditch, so we did some ditch cleaning. Those operations work well in the winter. We could drive across the farm field that way and do less damage to the field, and it's a good fill-in work. And then that ditch stays wet a lot of times, so when there was some frost in it, we were able to work. BD Construction did that for us. In the office, it's pretty typical, busy time of year with the equipment specs, construction projects, we're getting prepared for safety meetings. Mark, I know recently was working on the RCC report. Pre-construction, every year we normally have a pre-construction meeting, and the idea is to get the utilities and the various utilities and locators and et cetera in one room, so we can kind of tell what the upcoming projects will be. So try not to do something twice or tear up an area twice, and that's going to be March 17. We did take a couple of years off due to COVID, and we've decided it's time just to get back to normal and get that on schedule. So keep your eyes open if you're interested in that, and I could go on unless there's any questions.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Any questions, Lauren?
Yes, Lauren.
On a related matter, the DOT, did we ever get anything? You're still waiting on your study for the South by Menards and McDonald's. Where is that all at now?
Well, I have a couple DOT updates. Not on that particular question, but at least one anyway. So I haven't heard back on where they're at on the sequence for that, but they do plan to make a presentation publicly in the month of April to review different options on the North Y intersection, and that email came today. So nothing on the safety study, but yet something on the North Y.
Just keep pushing that because since we had that fatality down there, there's been a lot of people pretty still following up on that and wanting to know, hey, you know, even though it's a DOT issue.
Sure, no, we understand.
They don't want the ball to get dropped.
There is a recommendation through part of it to lower the speed limit on 11th Avenue Southwest, 11th Street Southwest, basically the highway section in front of Walmart, to drop it from 45 to 40. That's, that'll be one of the recommendations. So, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Okay. There is no report, oral report on Park and Recreation. Jared's not here. I think he emailed his report out to everyone. And Brian Moore emailed his report for the golf course yesterday. So we'll move on to the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. The month was a little more active than some months than average, but nothing of particular concern, really. Begined working with the property owners affected by the planned Sixth Avenue East improvements. We're going to have to acquire some easement interests there to straighten and widen that right-of-way. I think there were six. I've heard back from one and hope to contact the rest of them this week. Worked with the Civil Service Commission and Chief Warburton on an approach to try to better attract certified officers, which continues to be a concern. Worked with Mark White on the landfill acquisition and, of course, spent some time with all of you on budgeting and goal-setting.
Any questions for Don? Thank you. Okay, item eight, engineers' report, Jim.
Good evening. Just maybe update you on a few projects. Construction-wise, I think you'll see the work on that Drainage District 47 clean-out down there south or north of Menards and a little bit west of Menards. Think they're going to start that project next week. And first thing you'll see them take trees out, push those trees in a pile. When the weather's conducive, they'll burn those trees on-site and then clean out that ditch, and that project should be done. done fairly quickly. We've been working on the SRF project. As you recall, there is some funding available to do a SRF project in a water quality project, and that, we're hoping to bid that project pretty soon, and that's in the Gateway North Mall area and the QRS area, try to detain some of that water and retain some sediment. And then, of course, we're working on the East 4th Street project. Got the descriptions for Don, and then want to continue acquiring that right-of-way and finishing that design. That project comes up pretty fast, and that ties in with the CBDG grant that you talked about earlier. And then, of course, we're doing the tennis courts and working on the 25th Street sewer on the north side on that assessment schedule, so that's kind of what we've got going on. Any questions?
Question on the 25th Street. How are we coming? Are we gonna be getting some estimates here shortly, like our next meeting possibly, or where are we at?
And Ross has been working on it, and he just got back Saturday, so we didn't talk about it specifically today, so I can't tell you exactly where we're at, but I suspect, yes, next meeting, we're probably in a position to probably set up a committee meeting to talk, talk to either through committee or committee of the whole to talk about that. There's a few options and scenarios in there that I think you'll want to discuss as a council before you proceed to the public portion of the hearings.
Yeah, I'm having a few people still calling on that and stuff.
So we are making progress. Yeah. We're actively working on it.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions for Jim?
Jim, can you touch, I know Jared's not here, I was gonna, he and I emailed back and forth, but the site work specs for the rocket slide? I've had a number of citizens reach out to me on where we're at with that project.
Maybe that's why I got a call from Jared today about the rocket slide. Yeah, we, you know, we put together a plan, we got one bid or quote on it. He and I talked a little bit about, once we get this tennis court project pushed out the door, which I think will happen this week, we'll try to take a look at that plan and get some more quotes. We've got a couple of contractors in town this summer that would be capable of doing that work, so we're hoping to be able to generate more than one bid on that, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Jim. Item nine, city managers' report, Dan.
Only have one thing. I sent you out an email about the NIMs training. It's online training for the, it's a national incident management system. It goes with, it's a FEMA requirement. If we would happen to have a disaster and we weren't all up trained on the NIMs, they could cut it, they could reduce our award because we weren't all up to snuff, so any elected officials that haven't been around here forever, haven't got this done, I know Ron and Steve Havitt have certificates, and I have a certificate from before, but, and Brian's okay, but we need to get some of those done, so if you need that, me to send that out again, I will, but that's important that we, we get everyone trained in the NIMs. It's really pretty painless, but it's a, something you gotta sit at a computer and learn, and you gotta actually take a test afterwards, so it isn't that difficult.
Yeah. Thanks, Dan, for that, and I think that with the tornadoes that occurred in central Iowa over the weekend and tragically seven people died, it's very, very important that everybody on this dais be educated in that NIMs training and that we all be aware, so try and get that done as soon as possible. Okay. Under the mayor's report, just have a couple of things. The first one is a motion to approve the appointment of Nate Schmidt to the Planning and Zoning Commission. His term would expire June 30, 2022.
I'll move on that one.
Motion made by Lauren.
I'll second it.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. The second thing that I have, I'd just like to congratulate Spencer Hospital for being named one of the top 20 rural hospitals, and this is the seventh consecutive year that they've won this award. I think it's, they've only had the award for seven years, but I think it speaks well to our hospital, speaks well to the leadership of Bill Bumgarner and his staff and all the employees of Spencer Hospital, so congratulations to them. Item 11, counseling committee reports.
The only thing I have right now is the next meeting on the 21st in two weeks.
Okay. Item 12 is a motion to approve the bills and claims.
Before you do that, I have three to add. I didn't get a report printed, but they would be to the school, $42,634, part of their monthly local option sales tax distribution, the fair, $17,053, and then to the estate for the land purchase of $5,000 that we owe as part of the down payment, so add those three to the list sent out last week.
So approve the bills and claims with those additions.
I'd make a motion to approve the bills and claims with the three added items.
Motion made by Brian. Second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item 13, other business opportunity to address the council. Don't see anybody racing to the mic. Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tracy.
Are you sure, Donovan?
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Meeting adjourned. Donovan, I'm sorry.